Yes, can you make sure your mind record is green?
All right, thank you. All right, I will call this meeting to order. The purpose of this meeting is to consider a personnel matter. And I'd like to ask Sabrina Rockoff, representing the county in this, if you'd like to share, is there any additional information you would share with us at the beginning of the meeting?
No, at the beginning of the meeting.
Okay, all right. Thank you. So, the purpose of the meeting is to consider a personnel matter. There have been some issues of concern that were identified in association with the Director of the County Tax Office, and a letter was sent expressing some of those concerns. And so, the purpose of the hearing today is to give Mr. Miller a full opportunity to share his perspective directly or through counsel around the issues that were identified of potential concern. There were several, I would share, that I think one of the issues of most significant concern was around the potential for a financial or business relationship with an employee who Mr. Miller directly supervises. So, but this is an opportunity to respond to that concern, and so, we will invite Mr. Miller, or his representative, to share the perspective and anything you would like to share on these issues.
Yes. Thank you, Board Chair, thank you, County Commissioners. We're here today. I was preparing for this this morning, and I've got a son who, we go to church together as a family, and he does his devotions, and I was, he asked me what I'm up today. And I said, "I'm going to be representing the tax collector in Buncombe County." And he goes, "Oof, tax collector, I don't know if they like him." And I was like, "Well, we're going to find out." Today, we've got an opportunity to be heard. This is right from the statute that brings us here together. As you know, Mr. Miller is the tax assessor for Buncombe County, and the statute provides that if you're going to remove him, he has to have an opportunity to appear and be heard. But it's much more significant than that why we're here today, because there's some things that hang in the balance. Because the Board's decision today is extremely significant, not just for here, but for beyond. One, a decision by the Board today is going to be impacting Mr. Miller's career, it's going to be impacting significant benefits that he has earned, and it is also going to create case precedent. The statute at play has never been litigated before in the history of the statute. This is confirmed with Chris McLaughlin at the School of Government, as well as case law, that the statute has not been actually played, so there's not really a format for what this appearing and hearing is about, so we're all in this together for the first time. A couple of things, as you guys know, Mr. Miller, I know that he has appeared in front of you before, he has been a Buncombe County employee for 28 years as the tax assessor. He was initially appointed in 2017, reappointed in 2021. He does not have any disciplinary record. He was preparing to retire, but was actually asked to stay on for the 2025 appraisal to help the county out, and has done so. By the accounts of an independent report that the Board recently reviewed, he has done a good job with his office. This was a report that I pulled from the minutes, and it says that he's doing a good job, and that Buncombe County has done a good job with him. This is supported by members of the Board of Equalization Review, that I believe has sent an email to the Board about their opinion as to how he's doing. So, from how he's doing within the office, I think by all accounts, he's doing well. Now, there's certainly dynamics at play here that I am not aware of, that you guys are. You guys have dedicated your lives to be public servants, have worked with Mr. Miller, and know more about what's going behind the scenes that I don't know yet. The only thing I know about is what I see in the headlines, which is there was, there were some issues with the tax appraisal system. This was in 2022, courtesy of Mountain Express, that there was issues with trying to fix what's going on in the tax assessor's office, and how Buncombe County treated individuals with high-income homes or low-income homes. Recent headlines have said, "Okay, we're going to, we're going to look at these other houses that are more in the luxury market, how we're going to figure out how to make sure everybody's being fairly taxed." And then, we hired a consultant, or Buncombe County hired a consultant, or we did, hired a consultant to say, "Is everybody being treated fairly?" We're applying the statute, and the independent audit says there's no evidence of bias, and that people are being treated fairly. Recent developments, again, this happened as, most recently as August, where Mr. Miller was appointing a luxury house appraiser, I think that was sort of kind of where the Board was wanting him to do. He has been out at public events, he's been talking about the appeal rights, trying to give everybody notice that this is what you can do. And in the last meeting in August, they had set the scheduled hearing standards for a public hearing regarding the schedule. So, it's been productive, I think it's been going in the right direction. Certainly, there are agendas at play that I don't know about, but that, but I'm not saying which one's right or wrong, but that's sort of a dynamic at play that I can tell. In June, there was a situation regarding Mr. Miller's, and I quote, "personal business transaction." Him, Mr. Miller, as well as RS, which he supervised purchased an investment property in Hilton Head, South Carolina. He, and I guess I'll go back, I can fully address those points in regards to that letter. I think that would kind of devolve into a trial, which I don't think necessarily is what the format of this is for. But, you know, I will say that, just from 10,000 feet, that there is an issue there that is being used to bring us here, that he contests, and we'll talk more about that in a minute. The more interesting thing is, so he has this meeting that says, "Hey, we've got a concern about this," and he says, "Well, I'd like to retire, I've got 28 years, I want to do that." And that, obviously, the Board said, "No, we're not going to let you retire." You guys obviously have the letter, and they cite that there's a conflict of interest policy, county's core value violation, and that we're going to deem this unacceptable personal conduct. So, without going into that, let's just appraise the current situation. You have a public employee with 28 years who has said, "I would like to retire." If the county wants to just have a different tax assessor, they can do that. He said, "I will step off, I just would like to retire." If we can agree to that, and the parties move on, and we don't have to engage and continue down this path. If, another option for the Board, if he is allowed to remain in some capacity, and if you still decide, "Well, we still want to discipline you," that's still okay, as long as he's an employee, he can still retire and receive those benefits that he has worked for. We have tried to do that, we have tried to reconcile, we have tried to say, "What can we do to work this out so we don't result in a lose-lose situation?" Because the lose-lose situation is if we pursue this path, it is going to be an invitation for significant and costly litigation. This is a statute that has not been litigated. We do not know that, no one in this room knows what the definition of good cause is. And regardless of who wins today, or tomorrow, or whatever, that's not going to be decided until years down the road, with tons of discovery and depositions in saying, "Is what was happened to Mr. Miller correct?" So, that's what I think we're trying to avoid here. But if we are going to go that path, then we're going to go to the next step. Going back, there's a saying about regarding tax collectors and what they should do, and the saying was, "Collect no more than you are authorized to do so." So, that is charged with the Buncombe County Commissioners today of what they're trying to collect from Mr. Miller. Again, the statute says they may, they remove for good cause, under the legal term, that looks like a taking, which triggers certain constitutional protections. As I mentioned earlier, this is an issue of first impression. Again, according to Chris McLaughlin at School of Government, no tax assessor has ever been removed from office, there is no definition of good cause. We know that the statute is designed for the protection and the burden of the tax collector, who's in a, or tax assessor, he's in a precarious situation. Certainly, that invites motives to have him removed. There's certain constitutional mandates, as you can see from our North Carolina Constitution, a person is entitled to the fruits of their labor. He's worked 28 years, there's certain retirement benefits that he's entitled to, and a finding of good cause takes that away. Again, going through, if we still want to go through that path and determine, you know, what is it, then there's certain questions that this Board has to determine that go more into the legal realm, and it's whether what he did is an acceptable personal conduct. That has been litigated in courts of what just cause is. I can tell you that the cases that I can reference, I'm sure Mrs. Rockoff can reference others, that this is not, this does not amount to what just cause should be. The factors that we would both have to address in our briefs is the severity of violation, subject matter resulting harm, prior discipline, and discipline imposed in other cases. Again, for Mr. Miller, there's no, you know, the situation here did not involve any harm to anyone. There was a potential conflict of interest that could have arisen, that never did arise, and quite frankly, won't ever arise. And it won't ever arise because, one, Mr. Miller wants to retire. So, there's no issue that this could cause any harm to Buncombe County citizens if he's just allowed to retire with the benefits that he has earned. If he's not, then that again invites, "Well, why are we doing this?" Right? What is the point of this hearing if he's saying, "I would be glad to retire if I can keep my benefits," as opposed to good cause? That's inviting motive of, "Why are we having this hearing, unnecessary hearing to determine it?" And that's going to invite discovery and depositions, which I don't think is a win-win situation. There's another saying, going back to the original point, about the tax collector that went home justified. You may have heard the parable or not. Just to short that parable real quickly, is that the tax collector at issue just said, essentially, "I'm sorry," and then went home. And the saying there was that those who want to be exalted will be humbled, and those who want to be humbled will be exalted. And this is a situation, he's sorry that this situation has risen to the Board, that we're having this, he's tried to make amends. Again, there was zero harm done in this situation, it's taken an incredible toll on Mr. Miller. I think you guys are aware that he was actually in the hospital on Friday as a result of this. This is something that he's not taken lightly, this is again, a 28-year career that he has tried to build, and it's being taken away from him, and we're not sure why, but we're going to find out. We ask for a fair appraisal, a fair appraiser, and as the Board knows, if that doesn't happen, then we have to appeal and fight for what he's earned. We welcome any questions, and thank you for your time.
And Mr. Elston, does that conclude the remarks that you wanted to share on Mr. Miller's behalf, and does Ms. Miller have anything else to share at this time?
No, Mr. Miller makes himself available for any questions for the Board. I trust that the Board has the documents in front of themselves, such as the letter that was received, or the letter from September 6th, the letter from the Buncombe County Board of Equalization and Review.
What's the September 6th?
Could you clarify the September 6th letter?
The September 6th letter that was issued to Mr. Miller?
The one that was sent to Mr. Miller?
Yes.
There's not, okay, it's not a response to it, it's just the letter that's been sent from me?
Correct.
Correct. Right, yes, we all have seen that, okay. Okay. I think, I think I have just one question I would like to ask. And I would also just like to say that sort of, you know, thank you for being here, thank you for both being here to share your perspective. Just one thing I think I would like to share, speaking for myself, right, is that I think part of the presentation seems to make the suggestion that there are motives for why this inquiry is happening, related to, you know, some of the public issues that have been in our community around, like the revaluation process, things like that, which have been matters of public controversy, we've all been part of those discussions. But I just want to say that those issues have nothing to do with the reasons that we're here today. There were, there were issues that were identified of potential concern, Buncombe County's public staff looked into them and shared information with the county's Board about those specific issues, and the reason we're here today is because of those specific issues, not any of these other sort of like issues that have been part of the public discourse in Buncombe County in recent years. So, I just wanted to say that. And there were several issues of concern that were raised. Again, I think the most fundamental one, from the county's standpoint, was that there was information indicating that Mr. Miller had a financial, had developed a financial and business investment relationship with an employee who he directly supervised, which appears to be in conflict with county policies. So, I just wanted to ask if there's an acknowledgement that that's, you know, that that's the case, or if that's, if that is in, you know, is in dispute?
Yes. Addressing your question, Mr. Miller engaged in an above-the-Board transaction to purchase an investment property in Hilton Head, South Carolina with an employee. The decision to do that was not malevolent, it was not hiding anything, the conflict of interest policy doesn't specifically preclude getting in that, getting in that investment with that individual. It's much more broadly spoken, as opposed to direct. Having gone through that and making that mistake, that is acknowledged, and he understands that that was not appropriate. So, there is remorse on this side of the table that says that was not the best decision. Now, is that decision going to cost 28 years? And I don't think that it does, based on how the Board, or excuse me, yeah, well, how the Board, by and through its agents, have treated other individuals that have done more egregious things with less severe penalty. So, in regards to the optics of it, of the tax assessor getting into, getting into a business investment, which, again, there is not a specific prohibition of doing that, and then finding out, saying, "Hey, I get it, I will retire, move on, and I'm sorry for this." You know, in regard, I don't know, I don't know, and I don't mean to make any accusations or not, but in my experience as an attorney working in this, I've never had this situation, where an individual has made a mistake, has said, "I'm sorry about this," and has tried to work around and come up with a win-win situation, as opposed to having this hearing today, which is costing everybody's time, and it could eventually, and it could cost the taxpayers here a lot. That's the only reason why I say, like, I don't, I don't know what's going on, but it seems like the writing on the wall, that there's something else going on behind the closed doors. Because if it isn't, we've showed Ms. Rockoff, he's, you know, there was an accusation of, well, they, on the loan application, they put that they're together, that's not true. I've seen the loan application, I've spoken to the loan officer personally, that's not true. This was an investment, an above-the-Board investment, and it was with a subordinate, and he understands that, and he's willing to accept the consequences of that, but the consequences shouldn't be losing it on, out on his 28 years of retirement benefits. And to put a finer point on that, that specifically means that if, what I understand from the Board policies, if you are terminated before you retire, you lose your health insurance benefits up until the age of 65, and then you also lose your 25-year incentive. That's tens of thousands of dollars. So, did I address your question, Mr.?
You did. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Can you clarify if that business relationship is still active?
The, what I can tell you is that Mr. Miller is willing to have himself removed from those articles and completely give up that transaction. As you know, the timeline of this was that he received a notice at 5:50 on last Friday, he had a hearing that was scheduled for Wednesday, and then he was in a hospital on Friday. I have had other matters, me personally, that I've not been able to draft up the withdrawal of the membership agreement and terminate that, but that is absolutely something that he is willing to do, that he and I spoke about, that said, "Yeah, we can get it, we will forfeit anything about this, just to move on from it."
Okay. Mr. Elston, Mr. Miller, thank you for being here today. I don't think there's any other questions from the county's side. Thank you for taking the opportunity to share the additional information, is there anything else you'd like to share?
Yes, I just got a note from Mr. Miller that he says that the LLC has been changed.
Okay, thank you. All right. If there's no other additional information to be shared, then I'm going to call this meeting to adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Oh, I'm sorry, oh, but we need to, I'm sorry. So, we're going to, we're going to, is there a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Thank you.
Pursuant to 143, 318, 11A6, consider qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment, or to hear or investigate complaint, charge, grievance by or against an individual public officer. I anticipate the board will have to come out.
Yeah, should I start from scratch?
For the record, so pursuant to General Statute 143, 318, 11A6, we need a motion to go into closed session to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment, and to hear or investigate a complaint, charge, grievance by or against an individual public officer. This is a personnel matter, so I anticipate, since no action can be taken in closed session on that matter, I anticipate that the Board will have to come out and take some action.
Okay, so we, after the closed session's over, we will adjourn back into open session at that time. All right, is there a motion to go into closed session?
So moved. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
I guess.
All right, we are back in open session. I wanted to, there have been questions about why this particular personnel matter is being discussed by the Board of Commissioners. In our form of government in Buncombe County, the vast majority of employees who work for Buncombe County report to other county employees and ultimately the county manager is responsible for managing the county on a day-to-day basis. There are only a few positions within the organization that report directly to the Board of Commissioners and where the Board of Commissioners have responsibilities around personnel matters. And the tax assessor and the tax collector are two of those positions. And so, we just wanted to share some information about why this particular matter is being addressed by the county commissioners. And it's because under state statute, only the county commissioners can consider these issues. And it's the responsibility of county commissioners alone to kind of address personnel issues related to these specific positions. So I just wanted to share that information from a process standpoint. It's not a decision that the county commissioners decided to be involved in. It's just, we're just following the state statutes that set forth the process. And that's under North Carolina General Statute 105-294. All right. Is there a motion?
I apologize to interrupt you, but just a point of order for the record. In the resolution that passed appointing Mr. Miller to be the tax assessor, in that resolution, he fell under the Buncombe County ordinance and then fell through the county manager.
So I would respond to that, Commissioner. It is appointed by the board, not report to the board. I think that needs clarifying. These positions are appointed by and can remove and be hired by the board.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yeah. I move in accordance with North Carolina General Statute 105-294, having heard and reviewed the information developed by human resources in our internal auditor as well as the presentation and discussion today. I move that we find there is good cause to remove R. Keith Miller from his position as Buncombe County Tax Assessor and further direct the county manager or her designee to do any and all other acts as she deems necessary and appropriate in order to remove Mr. Miller from office and terminate his employment with Buncombe County effective September 17, 2024.
Second, though.
All right, there's a motion and second, further discussion. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Is there a second motion?
Pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 153A-98C7, based on the recommendation of the county manager, I move that the county manager is authorized to disclose the reasons for holding the good cause hearing against R. Keith Miller, the county tax assessor, and any supporting documentation and that the release of this information is essential to maintaining the public confidence in the administration of county services.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. That concludes the personnel matter. That was the purpose of this special meeting. Is there a motion to close the meeting?
So moved.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, meeting adjourned.